Mr. Mayor, it's 5:30. Yes, we have their form.
The regular council meeting, the city of Ellsworth, February 15th, 2022, will come to order. I'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item on our agenda, the consent agenda, is going to be the airport advisory minutes. It is agenda item report 22-020.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, we do the consent agenda all together, so it consists of claim ordinance and airport advisory minutes. So that's the whole thing. And yes, it is the airport advisory minutes, not golf course, your administrator screwed up. Yes, ma'am. I even had an extra day to check it, and I still messed it up.
You have any questions or any discussion of reading the items?
You'll see the flooring came in for the rec center, targeting late March to get that installed. We'll wait till after the home show, and there's an estate auction out there, but it's on hand. So both the fitness room, dance floor, and the rubber flooring for the main room are both in, so they're going to install pretty soon. And that $25,000 from Ralph ought to be the last big thing that comes out of our coffers out there.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion to make a consent agenda consisting of the airport advisory minutes for February 2022? Anything worth changing along your way?
I'll second.
Mr. Scritchfield makes a motion to approve the consent agenda of the airport advisory minutes and the claim ordinance. Ms. Coats seconds, any more discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, consent agenda has been approved. The next item on our agenda, petitions and delegations, is there a member of the public who would like to speak? All right, Karen, go ahead.
I'd like to know if it's just extreme, or if the city is actually going to be building the sidewalk from Good Sam into town, because there's no flags, there's nothing going on, and already six weeks have gone by and nothing's been done, so.
Yep, so as a matter of fact, Mr. Hobby Walks is going to give us an update on the sidewalk here in about seven minutes to answer your question.
Great, is there anyone else? You're okay, very good. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. This was the item we discussed on January 24th meeting. This is the 22-23 fee schedule, it's agenda item report 22-019. Does anybody have any questions regarding the fee schedule?
All right, so Mr. Mayor, the only thing I want to clarify, the access fee, the $12, so as it is now, you come in, you pay a $10 deposit, you get a key fob, we hold your check or your $10. Now you would just come in and pay $12 a year. If you lose the key fob, you come back and you pay $15 for a new key fob. And that's really targeted for after hour usage. As of now, we haven't really considered charging people to come in during business hours. So if City Hall is open and people want to come in and walk or shoot basketball, we haven't considered charging them for that. But this is only for the 4:30 to, I almost said 07, the 4:30 to 7:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 a.m. timeframe. Then the increase in the golf cart fees, we'll talk about when we get to golf carts, but those, the revenue generated from those increases will pay for one cart per year based on our revenue projections.
Seeing lack of people here to discuss this item, I'm assuming that they are all okay with the changes.
Great question, I know we kind of visited about a different fee schedule for the meeting room for like government entities.
Yes.
From early extensions.
Yeah, so we did discuss a state, local, and school rate, and we haven't come up with a good fee yet. $50 seems reasonable, because that's what we charge as an extension for the day. But we would be more than happy to add that on. Honestly, we got wrapped up with the other discussion and it kind of fell off my mind, to be honest with you. Yeah. But to so if you had a page 104 on your agenda where it says meeting room, where it's $15 per hour, 100 per day, kitchen included, the state, local, and USD 327 rate would be $50 per day instead of 100. So we would like to make that addition to the fee schedule. And hopefully Ronnie's not watching and shoots me.
We appreciate that, please. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept 2022-2023 fee schedule with the addition of a $50 per day rate for the meeting room for state and local government and USD 327 to use, which would alleviate it.
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Coats has made a motion to approve the fee schedule with the change for the government rate. Ms. Hanson is second in the motion. Is there any further discussion, any questions? No further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The 2022-2023 fee schedule has been approved. And we've got another, we've got some notes here, we've got another unfinished business item would be Mr. Hobby Walks, with Kirk and Michael has been updating us on several of the projects that the city has.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Start off, go down the top of my list here, of course, everybody's interested in knowing what's going on with the detention basins up here on the north side of town. Contractor's been absent for about a week and a half now. We ran into a ledge of rock as he was excavating and got together to discuss what we needed to do with that. Obviously, that was a different condition than what he was expecting to excavate. The state was willing to do some exploratory borings for us and delineate the extent of the rock. We came up with an estimated quantity, we brought that to the council at a special meeting, and it was decided to not incur the extra cost to, that the contractor requested to excavate that rock and leave it in place. So yesterday, KDOT and the city representatives and Kirk and Michael, we met on site to discuss how we want to grade the, you know, how to soak the dirt that's going to cover the rock out there. Came up with a general game plan, Kirk and Michael's going to develop or revise plan sheet to show the contractor and get them guidance on how to shake that soil and leave it in place in a nice fashion. We've also discussed yesterday some ways to work on trying to get the water to drain out of the basin. Naturally, if that appears that that's not going to be feasible, we're going to be working concurrently on a game plan on how we can maybe mechanically, if you will, get the water out of the basins so we can finish that south basin. So the intent would be to get the revised plans, and hopefully this week, next week at the latest, so the contractor can come back in and get to work again. When that'll happen, will be up to him, I don't know for sure. Currently, the project is in state delay, which means the contractor's not being charged working days. According to our inspector, he said the contractor currently has nine working days left to get majority of the project done, the final cleanup and seeding items, but I believe he has additional 20 days on top of that to get the final cleanup type items done. He has asked for additional working days, I haven't heard anything from the state if they're going to grant any of it for the time. Does not get done in nine days, he would go with like day damages. I don't have, off the top of my head what the amount is, it's going to be a certain number of dollars per day during the week. We're focusing on the south basin now to try to get that resolved and finished, and then of the north basin, north of the highway, he still has to install the drainage pipes, it's been up there, it's holding water as well. Mainly towards the south end, once those pipes are installed, it should drain out and allow him to finish that part of the project.
So currently, from Ralph, so it's going to come off 14, we'll go down at a, we say four to one.
Four to one or five to one.
For a little bit, and then it'll kind of level out to about a 1% grade down to the basin, and we'll do another four to one into the actual basin. So it'll kind of look like a, almost a rolling hill down into the basin, as opposed to how we had it before. So it's a substantial, substantially less amount of excavation than we had originally planned. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I don't have the quantity.
Right.
Few thousand yards less dirt in this, and the contractor mentioned during the special meeting call, he doesn't get paid for dirt not removed, so that will be a cost reduction measure for the project.
Any of the, any of the rock that he encounters, he's going to not charge us any special fee to take out, because we're not going down that far.
Yeah, so there, the rock's not just flat across, there's some pumps, high spots that are, he said, if it's just a few inches, he's willing to shave that off to put dirt over it to make it all look nice. They have a pretty consistent slope, so it'll look likely meant to do it, more or less. So when it says four to one, that's four feet out, one foot down, slow. Most highways are either six to one or four to one, so it'll be pretty much like a standard highway slope coming off the edge. Working on path getting forward at least and try to get this button up sooner than later. Can't make any promises on the exact date at this time. Turn lane project up here is K-156 and K-140, we were tasked with revising the plans, taking out the inch and a half overlay to reduce the cost since our bids came in significantly higher than the original estimate. We got those plans revised and resubmitted to KDOT last week. KDOT reviewed those, they may give us some comments, a few minor revisions, and then they said they are looking to bid the project for a second time in June, it'll be middle of June. Did put a note in here that actually tomorrow, KDOT will open bids for the turn lane project that KDOT is administering on the south junction of 140156. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of bids we get on that project. Kirk and Michael also designed that project for KDOT, City of Montville in that project. Just to compare what we got on the first project and see if they've gotten any better, gotten worse. In general, prices are escalating pretty much everything, highway materials are not excluded from that. Last time I checked, I think it was Friday, and we have two bidders listed, which we did on the north turn lanes, and then last time on the north turn lanes, only one contractor had actually submitted a bid. So hopefully we'll get two bids, still no competition, see what KDOT gets, and that'll help us see potentially where we're headed, north turn lanes on the second go around. Optimistically, if there's, if KDOT awards the bid for that project, and that contractor knows you're going to be here this summer, that should help our costs on the north project as well, because they know they're going to be in the community working. So we'll, I'll send Russ to an email and we'll see what the bids are on the KDOT project. So the multi-use path is the next project, was what you were asking about. We're going from Good Sam up to the north, up to the bridge, over the river. That project, we ran into some issues with needing to acquire some lightways, so we were asked by the city to revise the design of that project. We're working on that revision. We've got the revisions, I would say 95% done, initially the final review, we submitted to the state. It's a federally project, so it's a long drawn out affair. Once we submit those plans to the state, they'll review them, their access, we're revising alignment of the path, what's going to go once they got over the, what the creek's called.
No, no, by Cunyam.
No, they're by Cunyam, so it was going to go to the west, towards the fairgrounds, now it's going to continue basically straight below up to the bridge. Since it's going in different alignments, KDOT will have to do a double five minute review. It's not going to take very long, it just takes 30 days to fill out all the other state agencies, review the project footprint and the comment on it. Then they'll give us comments on the plans, that we can get the plans turned in, say like in a month. Maybe in April, we'll like to do the field check meeting, move forward with final plans, maybe in the summer, maybe bid the project sometime in this, maybe early fall. Construction probably would be the 2023 at that point.
So it's off another year.
Probably off another year. It's federally a project, it takes all the time to get to all steps. But we are getting close to having revised plans done and turning to KDOT. Normally, so when we're revised plans, KDOT can stream field check, that's normally 50% plans done. Since we'd already completed the plans before, most of that final plan work is already done. So even though we're turning in what we would consider 50% plans, they're going to be 95% done this time around. So the final plan stage will buy a lot faster this time. The last project I was going to touch upon is the cost share sidewalks. The city was awarded cost share dollars from KDOT to update certain sidewalks around town. We're working with security first on whatever we're going to do right in front of their building. We were working on getting some other projects sent out the door that are on deadlines, got those done, so we're working on finishing these sidewalk plans here this month and maybe in March. We'll get with security first on the final plans we develop, make sure they're agreeable, what we come up with, and then we'll be ready to print bid that project in spring for summer construction, as we've been talking about. O'Donnell? Yeah, I just saw that on the bottom of the list, so they, KDOT has indicated they're going to accept cost share applications again. March 17th is the deadline for submittals, and we had previously helped the city submit the construction of O'Donnell, from by the hospital going west over to K-14. It's just an empty or open field right now, so connecting that drive would provide several benefits. One of them is provide a shortcut, if you will, to the hospital for emergency vehicles. Would also open up some lots for residential development, which the city someone needs. So Rusty, we talked about to go ahead and resubmitting that application. Just update the cost estimates, the rest of it should be pretty much the same as what we've done before. And also working with economic development, there is should develop the, same industry.
Golden.
Golden Drive, I should have looked that in. Which is a spur route coming south toward 140. When they got the entrance to, went the 14 highway for O'Donnell approved by KDOT, they agreed to eliminate the potential entrance off of 140 going north, so it'll be a cul-de-sac coming down of O'Donnell south toward 140. But there are several lots platted along the east side of that road as well, could be potentially developed if the street were to put in. So economic development, if the city gets their grant, if KDOT there is trying to piggyback off that and get that Golden Drive extension built as well.
And you authorized $200,000 matching funds from the TIF for O'Donnell when we submitted September, October, whenever the last round was.
So have the cases do more 17th. I like to say KDOT makes selections pretty quick, but it's, they're in a mode of, when they, when they announce these selections, they want the governor to make a big announcement, and I know we turned it on, but as a candidate, got selected for some bridge funds two months ago, and KDOT still hasn't officially announced, they just got the email from the kitchen. So it could be May or June, I'd say before the official announcement's made of selection. We'll be optimistic that we can rate this one in.
Very good, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hobby Walks? Questions, well, thank you so much for that data. We appreciate that.
Very much, thank you very much. Boy Scouts and stuff, it's all we.
Okay, we understand, sir. So that will be the last item for unfinished business, we're moving on to new business. First item for the discussion is a golf cart purchase. It's the item attendant report 22-017.
So Mr. Mayor, counsel, it's pretty straightforward, the only quirky thing is Patrick has literally tried getting bids from everybody and their brother, from every brand for at least eight months, and no one other than Yamaha would produce a bid. And they produced two bids during that span. So he made every good faith effort to get more than one bid to follow the procurement policy, and it's just, it was an easy go, said they weren't even allowed to give you a bid.
Right.
Yeah. So the, as it is now, when, when we host tournaments, we have to rent carts from our members, because we just run out. So this isn't going to stop that, but it'll help mitigate some of that, increase the fleet. And the projected lifespan of a cart for us is about 10 years. So as I said before, with the increased revenue from the fee schedule, we project to pay one of these off every five years, so. And it is a budgeted expense out of 2022 budget.
Thank you for trying to get those bids, and it wasn't easy.
Yeah, you know, it was the first time I've ever encountered some maybe refusing to bid.
Right.
But that said, I love the old cart, it's probably the cart we would have wanted to begin with, that our last batch for Yamaha is, we love them. Very low maintenance, so. So the good side is, these are the carts that's often going to be picked by.
Is there a specific reason why, like you're going directly from like Yamaha, or is there a reason why we don't?
So that's the only way you can get new ones.
That's one of them.
Yeah, you can't get new ones from like, take themselves used Yamaha, sorry, right there. Yeah, so, so the company's actually basic carts, and they're based in Nebraska, there aren't no Yamaha, so they're, yeah, so that's why, that's the only way you can brand. Those fleet carts.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of five golf carts in around 60,000 dollars. Also, Mr. Scritchfield makes a motion to approve the golf cart purchase for 26,000, what was the item? Okay, 26,000, Mr. Johnson seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion, any questions about it? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the golf cart purchase has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, Patrick. Now, the next item is a sale of city equipment, it's the agenda item report 22-018.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is just a request to sell excess equipment with the, the Durango chief will tell you in a second, is coming Monday. Well, sorry, I already told him, the Durango's coming Monday, I'm not going to steal a sign or anything. And then we've got the old baseball nets from the rec center, and we've got a few desks and chairs, which always brings surprisingly large amounts, for whatever reason, on purple waves, so we just need council approval to list those things.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to authorize a sale of excess of the equipment. I'll second.
Ms. Hanson makes a motion to approve the sale of excess city equipment, Ms. Coats seconds the motion. Any further discussion, any questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we will go ahead and sell that used city equipment. The next item on the, on the agenda is an item that we had approved before, apparently there was some difficulties in the application process, so that's the opioid settlement, AR-22-022, let you go a little bit further into it.
So this just doesn't make any sense, because we took the county of Ellsworth's resolution, which was accepted, and changed county to city and submitted, and they rejected it, so we had to.
We have the same email.
Oh, okay.
Pat, so they emailed Patrick and gave it with the county, and it feels like we're the city, and they're like, oh, well, you have this problem too.
Oh, okay.
So they didn't like both of our.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better, but anyway. Okay, so anyway, whatever we tried to do last time, we need to revoke a resolution, or is it 22-0110? And, or excuse me, repeal 22-0110 and approve resolution 22-0215.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to repeal resolution number 22-0110 and approve resolution number 22-0215.
I'll second.
Mr. Scritchfield has made a motion to repeal resolution number 22-0110 and replace it with resolution number 22-0215, Ms. Coats has seconded it. Is there any discussion, any questions about this? All right, no further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll go ahead and replace 22-0110 with 22-0215, and hopefully they'll like it, we'll get this taken care of. And we also have an additional new business item that was added, has to do with the grant applications.
So Mr. Mayor, counsel, police chief got notified of a grant opportunity for, through the Kansas Police Chief Association, that it closes on Monday, Wednesday, I'm sorry, he got it on Friday and closes tomorrow. Ronnie also has a, some grant opportunities through the Kansas Parks and Rec Association. So we would like permission to submit those grants and have the mayor sign it. This is COVID money, so it was a short term, which is kind of odd, but anyway. It's a, it's not highly likely that, that we'll get the police association one, because it's more lost wages, but we're going to give it a whirl anyway.
So I'm going to be requesting $78,000 for new portables, which are our portable microphones, and then new mobile radios, which are the ones that go in our cars, and then I'm also requesting another laptop, which is the grant that I got that burnt last year from these officers, we have a new officer that's going to be the house that that. So him for about $78,000. $65,000, that is the portable radio, and the mobiles, it's very expensive. We have these from, I've been already indicating that he got the grant just after 9/11, which was the first announcement from Director for Ellsworth County, so we got them 15, you know, 20 years, give and take, so they definitely surrender a lot, they're very expensive, that's why we haven't asked for new ones, because it's either. So that's what we're going to be requesting the funding for, as Mr. Harrow stated. It's a small capital outlay portion, the order they were looking for was for. Small capital outlay portion, the order they were looking for was for lost wages hiring staff. We're gonna try.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving to allow the police department and parks, recreation department to apply for grants and allow the mayor to sign. Second. Mr. Scrichfield has made a motion to allow the mayor to sign the grant applications. Mr. Johnson has seconded. The motion. Is there any discussion? Any questions that you have?
What's Ronnie gonna?
Uh, equipment.
How much?
His was pretty small. It was in just a couple thousand dollars.
Other questions? Concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go ahead and allow the mayor to sign that. Grant application for both the police department and the recreational department. Moving on to department heads. Recreation is not present. Golf course, Patrick, give me updates. I do not have any neck dishes. Okay, very good. Street, water and sewer are not present. Fire is not present. Police chief?
So a couple weeks ago, you guys approved us to hire a additional officer, made an offer to an individual. And his first intended start date will be twenty-eighth of this month, so. A week from this Monday. In turn. Our targeted offer will be providing a full group best. So I have. Just for us to already tell everybody that the HP said the Durango is available and they're willing to meet in Junction City on Monday. So we're gonna go to Junction to get myself, Officer Wygle, and the new officer fitted for best because. Officer Wygle and I were funded this year to be fitted for our expired best and the new hires as well, so. I will say this is two hours off of our trip riding the weekend back and they offered to me is there, so we're gonna be in Junction and then also get the equipment.
Any questions for chief? Thank you. We appreciate that. Our city attorney, any updates? No updates? Oh, very good.
You're gonna love me today. Today I have handouts. Okay, you guys are last on my list, so. Usually you make your way around to any cities that have a new council member, mayor, et cetera, gift net. Lots of reading material that you may or may not read, but also I'm gonna give you a quick. Quick field. This is just a refresher in order to hire for the new people. The main thing that I would talk to people about is the Handoffs of the Meetings Act. That's the main thing that you guys have to be aware of as council members and make sure that you're. Always keeping that up for head. So the Handoffs of the Meetings Act is a law that guarantees the public basically the rights and sort of federal policy in place. It has two main requirements. All meetings must be open to the public. You must provide notice of those meetings to the people that have asked for it. The notice is usually taken care of through. Writing, so you don't necessarily have to worry about that. What you have to worry about is what the law. Declares as a meeting, which is a gathering or assembly either in person, by telephone, or by interactive. Communication by a majority of the members with a discussion of city business. So gathering. Majority discussion of city business. The law defines interactive communication as a two-way communication. So an email is a one-way communication. Until somebody clicks reply out and then it's a two-way communication and you violated the Open Meetings Act because that wasn't open to the public. There's one exception to that, which is you may use a two-way communication to determine time and place of meeting if you're recently. So that you can provide notice to the people. The main way that people get trouble with the Open Meetings Act is for executive session because one of the requirements of the Open Meetings Act is. The motion to go into executive session and the rules for executive session. So the motion to go into executive session has to have three parts. Has to state the subject to be discussed. Has to have a statutory justification. And it has to state the time and place in which the open meeting will resume. So an example is I move to go into executive session to discuss individual employees' performance. That's our subject matter. That's what we're gonna talk about. Under the non-elected personnel exception, that's our statutory exception. With the meeting to resume at six thirty in the meeting room. So that's your example meeting and those have to be recorded in the minutes. Common justifications for. Executive session for cities is non-elected personnel. That's the big one. Attorney client privilege is also one. And then discussion of acquisition of real property, not sale, but acquisition. Also, the rules for executive session. So no binding decisions can be made in executive session. You may reach a consensus, but you cannot take action. Must come out of executive session to take action. You can only discuss. The subject matter that you mentioned in your motion. So if you're going in to discuss and individual employees' performance. You may not discuss five other individual employees' performance. You may only discuss and. Now, you can go in to discuss multiple, which we've done before, or two different. And that's okay. You have to make sure that you are sticking to what you say you're gonna discuss and if you need to discuss something else, come out and go back in. Examples of complaints that were made last year, just to give you guys an example. There's a complaint made against a city in Kansas because the mayor sent an email to all of the council members. Requesting nominations for like a park board that they had to make appointments for. And they actually said that this was not a violation because he used. The blind copy function and so nobody knew who was on there and there wasn't interactive communication. He didn't share his responses with anyone else. And there wasn't that two-way communication. Someone else, another city in Kansas. Was found to have violated because they were discussing city business after the meeting adjourned. And another one is a city who posted a town hall meeting and they. Did not provide notice. He said, you still have to provide a notice of those meetings. So those are some of the three more recent ones in Kansas. If you guys have questions, ask them. Read the information. If you are so inclined, then you can always call me and ask me. The questions after that as well, so.
Yep.
So. The hospital. Trying to figure all has occurred. So we sat down. We were made aware that there was a new someone else that purchased the hospital. It's blocks that we've heard and I don't know if you guys are aware. And this person is currently going to host ghost tours. And overnight stays and all sorts of crazy stuff. There is a Facebook page out there that we tracked down. I went to the register of deeds to try to find out exactly who the new owner was. They do not have a new owner of record. At the register of deeds. We had a phone call scheduled with the alleged new owner. No answer. That was last week we tried and then. I actually reached out to eighteen eighty-three Investments as the current owner and they have an attorney. So I reached out to him and he just got back with me today. He said that he was aware that it did sell or he was under the impression that it did sell, but for whatever reason. The deed was rejected and wasn't filed. So I'm guessing they didn't have all their ducks in a row when it comes to the deed. And so they didn't, they didn't let it file. So as far as. We are concerned, the transfer has not yet occurred, but I can tell you guys it's gonna because this attorney is. You know, dummy and he wants to be done with it. So he, that's gonna happen and they. Patrick and Rusty and I will kind of. Talk from there about. What we want to do. We did post some signage out there, right? And we put some caution tape.
Yeah.
Caution tape, so. Basically, my main concern is the city's liability because we've been very outward in public about the fact that it's dangerous. And we don't want someone going in there getting hurt. So that's where we're at right now.
So I did speak to the presumptive owners. What is he?
Armed Safety and Security Officer.
Yes. And.
This is title.
This is title. And told him that that I would much rather them renovate it than us tear it down. And then they did not. Pick up the phone on Friday when we called. He called me late Friday and said they were busy and didn't want to stop what they're doing to talk to us. So that's when we advised them that we were gonna proceed. And I told N C R I to go back to work, so they're gonna continue with the with our process. So really, nothing. From the thirty thousand foot view has changed than from two weeks ago, but. There are some minor.
We do not have to restart our process. I deny that. It's, our process is done. I did reach out to the league just to ask them about. If they had seen us before and it's a very unique situation because we don't have a way of really preventing. Someone from getting in there with just how open it is and everything else. So. Patrick and I have discussed, I mean, I don't know how serious the ghost tours are. If things start really happening, then we might. Pursue some other avenues there to try to.
There's gonna have to be some stipulations on. I mean, like that building being. Taking care, I mean, like changes, like fixes made to it, right? Melissa, before they can go in there and have people. I mean, I know at that point it's not city liability, but it still looks terrible as far as the city part goes.
Yeah, so as it stands right now, the city, the statute that we're operating on, the statute gives us the authority to make it safe. Or raise and remove it, both, which we have the authority to do right now.
Okay.
Are basically what we've discussed is if they sit on pursuing a ghost tours, I'm gonna go to a judge and say. We'd like an injunction preventing them from doing this because that's our only way of truly making it safe.
Right.
If. This guy wants to fix it up. Then he, that he's gonna have to shake it up with you guys. I mean, the authority to go forward with. The raise and removal is there. And it's really up to you guys what that looks like, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So your stipulations are, I mean, up to you.
I don't know if we even have an all chance of this question or if you did that. Or they, or where.
So he, Mr. Woodward, the presumptive owner. Informed Chief Haffield that he was told that the city was coming after the building for back taxes, not because of condemnation. Now, that's. I shouldn't let him tell you that because what I just said is hearsay, but what.
He is correct. So he called last week. That's how we even found out that he'd changed hands up when he was even happy. He called to report criminal trespass and one of them arrested. There's somebody in there. I'm a problem server. We'll deal with it. We go up there and we found one of.
N C R I.
Individuals on the road. So I was like, hey, you got fully right to be here. We've done all our steps, like all the work back. I tell him. This is what's going on. He goes, why own that building? They're not allowed there. I said, well, unfortunately, our city ordinance allows us. As code enforcement to allow an agent, this person is an agent for the city to be in that building. So this is how this works. Well, I bought the building. I said, I I don't know that. That's not for me to fight. I said, well, when did you buy? He goes, I bought it the first of last month. I said, have you been here? He goes, yes, I've been there. So why did you buy it? I'm going to do ghosts. The venture's there. I said, okay. But why did you buy it? Well, the guy that owns it, Nebraska, he sent me all paperwork to the title. I guess. City was after him for taxes. He didn't want to pay the taxes. Didn't want to deal with it, so he just told it to me. I was like, did he tell you we were tearing it down? No, I said, we, that's the plan. So you might want to get contact to the administrator. I gave him city hall's number and then I gave the city administrator and said, here's a legend new owner. Here's what's going on. He was not happy that I was not arresting nor kicking out the person from that group there, but I felt our ordinance allowed us to go to be there and do what we're doing. So. So, yeah, he.
He's been there.
See the condition?
Yeah.
They were here at the end of December. That's my Facebook stalking. They were here at the end of December of the building. Were getting there. So I think they were fully aware of the condition. I just don't think they were aware that the city had taken any action on the building. I wonder if they're aware that these are just like the building's whole aspects. Elven scary. That's scary to people in there. Okay.
But I'm gonna assume if that kind of business, you're gonna have to have. Inch like liability insurance. I mean, I would think.
I think that there is liability insurance there. What scares me is. Somebody goes in for their twenty-four hour overnight ghost tour. The ceiling falls on their head. They sue him and us because we've clearly stated over and over again to the public in the newspaper, it's unsafe.
Right.
And even if we don't have any liability there, the cost of proving.
Right.
Liability there is not pleasant.
Right.
So that's where, that's what I'm not concerned.
Any other questions for? Ms. Miller? But we'll stay on top of this. I mean, we've had some meetings and have been made aware of it by members of the public. Don't feel a sense of panic about this at all, so. I think we'll be fine. You know, if if there's an opportunity there and we can help them and this can work out, great. But if not, we'll pursue with every step that we've already taken. Things will just carry on as normal, so. Next on our list would be. Ms. Haxton. You don't have anything? Okay, very good. Mr. Barnadale?
All right, Mr. Mayor, counsel. We had the meeting with. Benish and the airport folks today. Cost is gonna restart construction on February twenty eighth. Focusing on. It's kind of silly the way they said it. The south, middle and north paving of the runway, which kind of seems to be the entire runway, but. Anyway, so they're gonna attempt to do phases three and four simultaneously. Phase three is a forty-five day stretch. Phase four is sixty-five days, so. They anticipate having the new run.
I'm still not sure about that.
Yeah. So they anticipate having the new runway open by the end of March, the first of April. And then doing the math on. Sixty-five days after from March first kind of project completion or substantial completion of the project. And the. The only other. Big thing that I can think of is. I mentioned the revision of the public comment policy. So. The mayor met with Melissa and she kind of gave him three options. One would. Be to eliminate public comment, which he and I were absolutely not in favor of. Two would be tweaking the current format. Like, there's one thing I've never liked that someone has to give their entire address when they get up to talk because. If you have paid any attention to kind of the. The mass discussions, we had people going to people's houses because they, it didn't happen in our meetings, but some of the other meetings, people would go and beat on people's doors and. Voice their opinion. So we discussed like, when you stand up, you say, I live in the city limits, or I live in the county, or I live in a different city, kind of announcing. Kind of making that addition. And then the third option was kind of incorporating that, but then. After we discuss an item, you know, you have the motion to second any further discussion. We open up for a short, maybe three to five minute. Public comment time there. So we're gonna, we're gonna draft some policy options for you for the next meeting. I realized after I sent that that it was pretty ambiguous. And I didn't want you to. To think we were doing some rash, but that that's kind of the revisions we're looking for is is to encourage more dialogue, not restrict dialogue, so.
Right. Can I add to that?
Yes.
So I was thinking you see saying it perfectly. I think the good thing that came out of the January twenty fourth meeting was, we want public dialogue. We want it to structure. So that the council can make a decision. And, you know, we didn't do that at that time. You know, we had some ambiguity and I think that it caused confusion. I think I walked away very confused. And, you know, we didn't, we didn't accomplish what we needed to accomplish. So I went to Ms. Miller and said, hey, what options are available? She talked to the League of Municipalities, talked to some people who. Have other policies in place and we started to discuss, you know, how do we want to do this? I'll definitely be in touch and. We'll all agree and we'll we'll vote on it and we'll we'll make this a policy change and. And it's to welcome public comment, but in in probably the best way to say it is in a positive structured way. I like it. I think it's gonna add to our meetings and just wanted to give you a heads up.
I would like to add that if somebody. Follows our direction, has their name, but all of this up here to speak. Maybe I'll make that's ever one finish saying when it comes in.
We can, and we also, this is something we can discuss privately, but we publish to the to the public three minutes, so. You can only imagine that if you give somebody. Five minutes and then you cut somebody off at three, you're gonna have a problem. So we've got to be consistent from the very first meeting. You know, until my four years is up, we've got to be very consistent. I think we establish that, so. We can certainly discuss that three minutes. I think that's fair. You know, that can be made longer. I agree. But, you know, if you if you make an exception for one person, you're gonna have to make it for everybody. You gotta mess with it, so.
We did have an instant. Not long after I got here, we had a forty-five minute public comment.
But anyway, so. But anyway, so.
But acknowledge. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Coats, do you have anything here?
No, but I will just add that I asked about this several months ago, and I think it did get brought up that something, Lindsay Holtz was here. That maybe knowing she was gonna take more than those three minutes, maybe to start her own business. So, is that also something? I don't know if that falls into your policy, but is that something you guys are also thinking about?
Yeah. Well, I think we could take the, the last meeting, for example. We knew that the preponderance of those folks were here for one issue that we could include that into the, the motion and second discussion. Or, uh, we would have to massage that a little bit because I'm not sure we would have gotten a motion and a second out of that discussion.
Yeah, even if you don't have a motion and a second, but the, the, the thing there would be, their comment is gonna be after the decision is made. So, if you're wanting to hear from them before the decision, then, does that make sense?
Right. Well, so the idea is that when the mayor says, is there any further discussion? That's when the public comment. And then they would vote after the.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's doable. And if there's no motion or second, you just have to. You don't have a motion on the floor, so we're gonna move on. Is there any public comment? And that would be the end of, without a motion or second, it'd be before you move on. About, yeah.
So, yeah, there, there are a lot of different options here.
Yeah.
And we, we started discussing that the mayor does have discretion not to provide options. That's not advised. But you do stand on fairly solid ground to do that if you need to, for our reasons.
Yeah. So, um, basically what you said was, you advise options that have written policy for your city, as how you address public comment. And in the absence of a written policy, the mayor ultimately has discretion or the meeting passes session.
Right. So, so we'll, yeah, definitely, there are a lot of different options there. But I, you know, I thought it was important that the public have a structure and then you bought into and voted on it. So, that's what we discussed, and I think that's the way forwards. Mr. Johnson? Ms. Hanson?
Maybe she can answer this. What is the status of that house on the corner of, maybe Third and, I'm not sure. Like across from Roger Tanner's, is that?
So, so that house, so nothing's been done with that house, other than we mow it when it's gotta be mowed and stuff like that. Because unfortunately, it, at least in, in my opinion, and it was even of Mr. Hoffman and previous city administrator. I don't know if it's part of who I spoke about that house. I'm not really even going to go. But it doesn't leak. So, unfortunately, it may not look great from the outside. All the windows are intact. The roof doesn't.
Except there's not, there's some windows broken now on it.
Is there now? And honestly, I'm not gonna lie, since we've had code enforcement also, I don't want to.
Okay, okay. Well, I just noticed there's some windows that I noticed, like, there's, like, some of that plaster left, whatever that's what it is.
So, unfortunately, I think it's from office, not here to, 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 or even that. Our, the kind of consensus was, yes, it looks horrible. The front porch is falling in, you know, you don't want to step on it. But the house is generally secure, unlike some of the other houses that we have dealt with. It's certainly something that, um, I can, Mr. Barnard and I can speak about and then send code enforcement to take a look at, and if it does something.
I just didn't know if the taxes were, yeah, the taxes were.
On a nation that it's something we could bring to the council.
Okay, yeah, I just.
It had never reached, and we all know the house. It looks horrible. It just never met the same criteria as some of the other houses.
That's why I just noticed that there's a couple windows that are broken out of it. So.
That's one of the, the door ranger.
It's that.
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen.
Second.
Okay.
Second or third.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an alibi. I have an alibi before you.
Two fifteen west.
I forgot two things.
We called that gentleman and we've gone around with him a couple of times. And he, furthermore, base taxes, and he has every intent in his mind to renovate that house. Or sell it for sixty-five thousand dollars. So, we just haven't had a legal.
No, I know. I just happened to notice that there was windows broken and links that I, I can't believe that it doesn't leak if the siding is, a lot of the siding is, right.
All right. Um, I know. I apologize. I forgot to mention these two things. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
Hey, um, so since January first, Verl has written twenty-five citations. Twenty-two of those have been brought into compliance. He has three that are open.
How many?
He's written twenty-five. Twenty-two have been brought into compliance. Three are still open. Uh, his next report, um, I didn't, I didn't give him the best guidance. So, we'll get you like a twelve were grass, twelve were lambs. We'll get you a better breakdown on that. And he sent, uh, six vendors. He sent the three houses of demolition out to six different vendors. So, uh, we'll give bids back for the three properties that need to be.
And three picked up the packs.
Okay.
Today and junior movement.
So, progress for, for those three properties.
Yeah. Anyone else? So, I'm gonna wrap it up. It's, uh, the mayor's turn here. So, yes, uh, so, a lot of good came from the last meeting. I think there are things that probably we needed to address down the road. We can kind of move that much more to the forefront. Um, you know, we want the council to have the information they need to make decisions, and hopefully this will help you to do that. We also need to promote civil public conversation and providing structure, I think, will, will help that. It won't be perfect. We'll do the best we can. And, um, you know, so I'm excited about that and certainly appreciate the, um, patience that you've had as I kind of learn the procedures as we kind of move forward. So, I, I appreciate that. It'll take a little bit of time. No more on that too. Um, with that said, is there anything else? You would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Coats, you made a motion to adjourn. Uh, Ms. Hanson has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.